I see the recording is going up, yep, and in the chat we say we're good to go. All right, so, uh, thank you all for joining us. I'm City Council Jesse Letterman, Chairman of the COVID-19 Response Committee. This is our May 4th, uh, weekly meeting of the committee. We're joined by, uh, City Council Justin Hurst and City Council Melvin Edwards. We're also joined by the Commissioner, Health and Human Services Commissioner Helen Colton Harris and our Budget Director Melanie Kobe. I also want to thank, uh, a couple of members of the media, I see Paul Tuthill and Western Mass News. So, thank you all for being here to help us get as much info out as possible. And we've just been joined also by, uh, City Council Ward 7 Counselor Tim Allen. Uh, so we'll begin with the Commissioner. Commissioner, thanks for joining us. And if you want to go ahead and uh, give us any updates you'd like, and then we can, uh, move to questions.
Certainly, and I will try to be brief, and I know you probably have a long meeting today. So, most of the, uh, updates, um, as you know, are on the city's website as far as the data is concerned. Um, the, I will also go into the vaccination data that I have a little bit at, uh, your request, uh, Council Chair Letterman. Uh, so if you, um, are paying attention to the data, you know that, um, our data has been extremely high in the city of Springfield, although we did have seventy-nine less cases, uh, this week than we did the previous week. The encouraging sign for me is I've been monitoring the data is that this week, we are looking amazingly well. Um, and I am so pleased, uh, that our residents appear to be taking, uh, the virus seriously, and also that we are in a place where our vaccination rates, although lower than, uh, the state average, and I will tell you those averages in a few minutes, uh, are really, uh, the rates are decreasing for the city of Springfield in a good way. Uh, today, I, this is the first time, and I can not tell you how long. Today I had sixteen cases for the entire day. That is unheard of in terms of what I've experienced in the past, and, uh, Sunday and Monday, the numbers were in the thirties. And so, easy for us to look at the numbers at this point and be able to make some concrete decisions around the city of Springfield and our reopening plans. As you know, Patrick Sullivan and I meet every Monday at one o'clock to go over, uh, all of the requests that we have for events. And each Monday, we have about, uh, ten requests, whether that's weddings, um, you know, prayer marches, whatever it is, individuals, uh, put in applications. And I know that, uh, Patrick sent those applications to the city council so that you have them, uh, as well. So, we review those applications each Monday in order to make decisions on how to move forward with various events that individuals are requesting around the city. Uh, so this is a good week. Uh, it's a week that is allowing us to make some, uh, decisions, uh, that have been hopefully well received uh, by the community. We have always said that we would base decisions on the data. Our data is for this week and the previous week is looking extremely, extremely well. For the month of, um, May, we have currently eighty-eight cases, uh, that we are following. Uh, Sunday, there was fifty-one, Monday thirty-six, Tuesday forty-three, Wednesday a hundred and eight, Thursday thirty-four, Friday sixty-five, and Saturday eighty-eight. Um, last, uh, the week of four eighteen, and I won't go in all of the weeks, we had five hundred and four cases. This week, we had five hundred, I'm sorry, we had four hundred and twenty-five. So, we are watching the case numbers and we're watching them carefully that our cases are, um, are going down in the city, which is really, um, as I said, it's really is very, um, heartwarming to know that people are taking this virus seriously. What is concerning is that eighty-nine percent of the cases we had in the city of Springfield last week were under the age of fifty, and sixty percent of those cases are under the age of thirty. And so, we know that our, uh, younger, uh, colleagues and residents are not taking this virus as seriously as we would like. There is still a lot of community spread out there. I'm still extremely concerned about the young people in our environment, um, and they're, uh, they're taking risks. Uh, one of the concerns that I don't think people think about with our younger individuals is that if they become infected or have the virus, they could potentially take it home to older parents and families. And that is a real concern. All of us should be concerned about as far as our health is concerned. One of the good news about the wheel is that eleven percent of our cases were fifty-one and older. What does that mean? It means that that's the age category that has been vaccinated for the most part, and it means that those vaccinations, many of them are getting their second dose. I'm here at the clinic. We will service another two hundred and thirty-five individuals, and so we know that the vaccine works. Whatever the, um, the conversation might be, the vaccine works. We know that because of the individuals in long-term care who are no longer dying at the same rate that they were previously. So, fifty-one and older was just eleven percent of our cases last week. We'll see what happens, um, as this week goes on, but that's good news. That's really good news for us. And, and I hope we can appreciate that and help, um, our younger individuals try to be safe and helping them avoid high-risk, um, activities. So, that is, uh, the wheel. And in black African-American was sixteen percent of our cases last week. Other was twenty-four percent. I should say that I pulled, um, Latin X out of other because what we found out was that there were individuals who were reporting as other who were not other. Uh, and we know that because when we do the contact tracing, we call them and we drill down on race and ethnicity, uh, obviously symptoms, isolation quarantine. Um, and we found out that many of the individuals reporting as other, um, were not other. And so, I'm going, we'll probably change that as our colleges, uh, transition over the next couple of weeks, uh, because that was the group that was reporting other when in fact they were not, um, not other. So, white was thirty-four percent, unknown twenty-four percent, black African-American sixteen percent, and other were showing at twenty-four percent. As far as zip codes are concerned, that is no secret as well. Oh, one, one, oh, one, one, oh, one, one percent of the cases, oh, one, one, oh, three, two, oh, one, one, oh, four, twenty-four percent, oh, one, one, oh, five, eight, oh, seven, eight percent, oh, eight, seventeen percent, oh, nine, twenty-five percent, one, eight, five percent, one, nine, seven percent. Uh, two, eight was zero percent, and two, nine, two percent, five, one, three percent. So, those were the percentages of the, as far as the cases last week is concerned. I'm going to go into a little bit of data about vaccinations, but let me stop there and ask if there are any questions um, on the data that I just presented.
Yeah, Helen. Counselor Gomez, floor is yours, sir.
Yeah, I, I, I heard those numbers, but, uh, Helen, uh, no Hispanics, uh, were, uh, checked, Mark?
The way the data is reported, um, Counselor Gomez certainly needs to be, um, there is no box to check for, um, Latin X, Puerto Rican, Hispanic on the testing form. And so, what that means is that those individuals, uh, may check other, and that's fine because we reported it as other, uh, in that other box. But again, lately, we've been seeing other individuals check other who I know, um, are not, um, Hispanic or Latin X, whichever term, um, you want to refer to. Uh, so we stopped putting Latin X in that box. If you recall, previously, we would report other as Latin X because we told, the state told us that that is how they are reporting it out. But when I saw, um, that so many people were putting other, who I knew were not other, um, what we are going to do is back out those individuals who are not other, and then I can give you a better number as far as the Latin X community is concerned. But absolutely, um, there are Hispanic or Latin X individuals in, in those numbers, but we need to pull it out to make sure it's accurate.
We, we can't, we can't count for them because others could be an animal. As far as I, I view it, uh, we need something there that will depict our, uh, people being vaccinated.
Well, this is not vaccination. I will give you the vaccination.
All right.
This is testing. This is testing. So, I'm going to go into vaccination, uh, in a minute, but I wanted to stop and make sure there were no, um, there were no questions around the data that I just presented.
Thank you, Helen. Thank you, Counselor Gomez. Any other questions on the testing side, uh, before the Commissioner moves to the vaccine data? See, and that Commissioner.
Quick question, Counselor, or, um, Counselor Chair. Alan, what is the reasoning behind them not having a box for Hispanics at the state level? What's, what's the logic behind that?
Counselor, I do not know. We have asked that question several times, but the testing form, that is the form you fill out when you go to take a test, does not have a box, um, that represents, uh, Hispanic, Latin X, uh, even multiracial. Uh, I do not believe it's on that box. So, you're right. I mean, it, it, it is not representative of who we are as a Commonwealth and the state is, um, um, so what they said is they're using other as that, um, as that race ethnicity. However, um, obviously, that doesn't, uh, that doesn't, that's not accurate in terms of us picking up the data. So, there is.
Yeah, that is pretty, that's pretty sad. Um, I, that's sad. I mean, I, anyhow, so, thank you, Commissioner.
No, you're absolutely right. Um, and we have made the peace, and hopefully that we have expected that form to change. It is not. And so, we are, um, we were left with the data that is given to us, and when we pull it off, it is other and unknown. Those are the two, um, categories that we have difficulty in, um, being concrete about as far as our reporting is concerned.
And I don't know.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, Counsel.
Well, I was gonna say, I don't know. I, I agree, Counselor, and I don't know that, that we recognize, I mean, of course, we've been receiving these updates for, for over a year. I think because some communities and apparently us as well, we're reporting that as the Latin X or Hispanic, uh, numbers, uh, because that was the state directive. I'm not sure that, that at least, you know, I think many of us didn't realize that until. So, we, it sounded like it's been raised by the administration to the state though, previously.
It has been, and I, I think that, again, I would have left it as Latin X, but those numbers were so skewed. I mean, I had places where I looked at that box, the others, and there would be ten to fifteen people in the others. And then when my staff called to do the contact tracing, we knew that those individuals were not Latin X. So, that would have skewed the numbers. So, we're going to fix it. Uh, and I think this has been the last three weeks that I've reported it this way. We will fix it, but, but it's a matter of going in and backing out those individuals who we know, um, are not, uh, Hispanic or Latin X.
What was the circumstance, Commissioner? I was wondering as to, uh, why there was this large jump in, in, uh, individuals reporting other who were not in fact other?
I believe there was an institution that was directing their, uh, students, and they were students, uh, to report as other rather than, um, their, their, their true, uh, race. Now, um, I have spoken to those individuals. It's clear to me, what, again, the only reason I would have known this is when my staff does the contact tracing, they said, you know, um, this is really, this data is extremely skewed. And so, I believe that so many students would not have checked other unless they were directed to, uh, by, uh, someone who wanted it to appear as if the data, uh, wanted to skew the data. Let me say that.
That was going to be my next question, and we don't have to, you know, I'm just wondering what the intention would be as to why they would want that data skewed.
Have no idea. Um, that was not clear. Um, you know, I think the answers are maybe there's some confusion and, but so many, you don't have thirty people confused. Uh, that just, and so it would appear to me that there is, um, individuals who are, are directing, um, that, that individuals to write that down.
Well, I appreciate, you know, the work of your staff as always in, uh, tracking and, and realizing the situation and, and rectifying it. Um, so we can certainly, uh, communicate also with the state delegation regarding this ongoing absence, as, uh, Counselor Gomez and, and Counselor Hurst pointed out, uh, relative to this deficiency, which it sounds like the admission, administration has also done. So, we will, we will certainly add our, our voices to that cause. Uh, Commissioner, did you want to go into the vaccination data?
Sure. Um, so, the grand total, and this is, uh, as of April twenty-eighth, I will have a new report that will come out this week, but this is, um, the, the reports come out on a weekly basis. I will get the report for next week, and I will report that to you, uh, next week. So, the grand total administered of vaccines administered for the city of Springfield is seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-six. Um, they calculate the rate per hundred thousand, which is fifty-one point one individuals per hundred thousand rate. For the state, um, they have vaccinated five million nine hundred and twelve, two hundred and thirty. That rate is eighty-four point eight for hundred thousand. So, the doses administered for the city, uh, as of April twenty-eighth, and the report came out April thirtieth, uh, was about eighty thousand. The individuals who received a first dose in the city of Springfield, forty-nine thousand nine hundred and forty-two. Uh, the percent of our community with the first dose is thirty-two percent. Statewide number is three million six hundred eighty-one, three hundred and ninety-seven. That's fifty-two point nine percent of the Commonwealth as an average, um, as far as individuals with a first dose. So, as you can see, uh, by that, the, uh, city of Springfield is about nineteen percent behind the rest of the state as far as our vaccination rates are concerned. The individuals partially vaccinated, uh, in the city, uh, is seventeen thousand six hundred and forty-one. For the Commonwealth, it's one, a million two hundred and forty-five, three hundred and ten. So, the percentage of fully vaccinated is eleven point three percent. For the statewide, it's seventeen point nine percent. Fully vaccinated for the city is thirty-two thousand three hundred and one. Um, for the state, it's two million four hundred and thirty-six thousand, uh, seventy-eight. Uh, so, we are fully vaccinated at twenty point seven percent. The, uh, Commonwealth, uh, average is thirty-five, uh, point zero percent. Again, uh, you can see that we are probably about fourteen point three percent uh, behind the state as far as, uh, fully vaccinated is concerned. The zero to sixty-four-year-olds in the city of Springfield, we vaccinated, uh, thirty-four thousand eight hundred and thirty-eight. Uh, the state is two million six hundred and fifty-nine thousand four hundred and seventy-five. For Springfield, that is zero to sixty-four is twenty-five point six of the population. For, um, the statewide, it's, uh, forty-five, oh, point nine percent. Again, another, uh, twenty percent gap for the city and the state. Sixty-five to seventy-four-year-olds, we vaccinated nine thousand one hundred and eighty-two. Uh, for the state, it's five hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred and sixteen. For us, it's seventy-five point six percent of the population, but for the state is eighty-six point nine percent of the population. Seventy-five years plus, uh, five thousand nine hundred and twenty-two. Uh, and for the state, it's four, forty, four thousand two hundred and eight, eight hundred uh, and six, which is, so for us, it's seventy-four point two percent of the population. For the state, it's eighty-six point nine percent of the population. So, this next, um, this, this next area is going to go into, uh, race, uh, for the population. Let me first start with the, um, gender as gender as defined by the Commonwealth. Uh, so, uh, females first, I'm sorry?
Commissioner, I apologize. For the age breakdown, we had the zero to sixty-four and the sixty-five to seventy-four. Now, what about folks under sixty-four? Do we have those numbers?
Well, the, they would count in the zero to sixty-four.
Oh, the sixty-four, oh, thirty-four thousand in the, so we vaccinated thirty-four thousand individuals under sixty-four.
That's correct.
Nine thousand one hundred and eighty-two, sixty-five to seventy-four.
Nine thousand one hundred and eighty.
With the zero to sixty-four, do we have, um, do we have any further breakdown from that? Do we know what the status of younger people?
I certainly can find that out, but that is not a part of the report, um, that was, that, uh, was sent to me. Um, and I did, there are a couple of areas that I requested additional information. One, you will not see zip codes in this report. Um, I think zip codes are very important. Um, census tracts are not in this report, so we think census tracts are important. So, um, we have asked, this report is coming out only because we asked for it. It was not something that was, you know, given to us. We asked, um, at, at least, we asked to have, uh, more data around vaccination so that we could do the necessary outreach, uh, that needed to happen as far as our residents are concerned.
Okay, Karen, Karen, Commissioner, sorry.
So, female first dose Springfield, twenty-seven thousand seven hundred and thirty-eight, which is thirty-four point one percent of our population. Mass statewide, two million eighteen, six hundred and eighty-six, which is fifty-six point three percent of the population. Male first dose, twenty-one thousand two hundred and thirty, uh, which is twenty-eight point four percent of the population. Uh, the one million, uh, the state is one million six hundred and twenty-four, seven hundred and sixty-five, which is forty-eight percent of the population. Again, um, we see that the, um, city of Springfield is lagging about nineteen to twenty cent, uh, percent behind the state. This seems to be pretty consistent throughout the data. Um, then unknown, undifferentiated first dose. So, these are individuals who did not identify, um, as male or female. For the city of Springfield, it was nine hundred and seventy-four. For the Commonwealth, it was, um, thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-six. Now, they did not give us percentages because there is no, um, percentage to, um, as far as our population base is concerned, to break out that data with. So, they just gave us the raw numbers. Um, so Springfield, American, Indian, Alaskan native first dose, forty-nine, which is sixteen point eight percent of the population. The, uh, statewide, three thousand six hundred and ninety-six, which is thirty-one point seven percent of the population. The Asian, um, uh, the Asian community first dose, one thousand six hundred and eleven, thirty-two point eight percent of the population. Two hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and three is the Commonwealth, which is forty-eight point four percent of the population. Black, um, the first dose, six thousand nine hundred and fourteen, which is twenty-three point two percent of our population. The statewide is one hundred seventy-five thousand five hundred and fifty-six, which is thirty-four, uh, point five percent of the population. Hispanic first dose, twelve thousand seven hundred and sixty-seven, um, uh, which is sixteen point seven percent of our population. The, uh, count for the state, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand three hundred and eighty-nine, which is thirty point one percent of the population. The multiracial first dose, five hundred and fifty-two, which is fourteen point zero percent of the population. Um, the state, seventy-four thousand two hundred and fifty, which is fifty-eight percent of the population. The native Hawaiians, Pacific Islander first dose, uh, is thirty-one, which is fifty-eight point seven percent of our population. Uh, the state is one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven, seventy-one point five percent of the population. Other first dose, um, is, uh, three thousand nine hundred and sixty-one. Um, and the statewide is a hundred and forty-four thousand twenty-eight. And then white is eighteen thousand six hundred and thirty-two, forty-four point nine percent of Springfield population as compared to the Commonwealth's two million five hundred eighty-eight thousand one hundred and thirty-two. The average is fifty-two point two percent of the population. I think another, um, another individual, another data is looking at, um, the missing, uh, those individuals who are partially vaccinated, meaning that they're missing the, um, second dose. And that is two thousand four hundred and twelve, thirteen point seven percent of our population. For the state, uh, is eighty-four thousand five twenty-two, six, uh, point eight percent of the population. Again, we are missing, um, our second dose higher than, um, uh, any, uh, other, uh, data point. So, for the Commonwealth, it was six point eight. I think I said that. So, that is, that is some of the data from vaccinations, uh, the vaccination uh, portal. At this point, I continue to drill down with them. I want, I do need the zip code information so we can target specific areas of the city with our outreach campaigns. They have said they would give me that. Hopefully, that will be in the report they give me next week.
Uh, thank you so much, Commissioner. Commissioner, what's your, what's your sort of feeling right now about the numbers that we do have? I know that a great deal of work has gone into, um, putting together local clinics, and, and we certainly have seen utilization there. Um, but I'm just wondering for, for sort of, uh, the committee's benefit, how you, how you interpret these numbers and, and what you think, uh, we can do, uh, to continue to support the effort for, for outreach?
I think that there needs to be, um, the zero to, I'm sorry, not, but the eighteen to thirty-five-year-olds is something that we'll be targeting right now. Um, I believe that that is the population that we need to, uh, get vaccinated, or at least, uh, get the information to so that they can make an informed decision. I actually, the data last week and this week and the week before is if our data holds for this week, um, I think we're, we're in a good place where I think we can, uh, safely say that we will be, uh, back in yellow. The goal is to stay in yellow. So, we are beginning to make moves, uh, to allow, um, high-risk activities. I'm working with the school department on their return to wrestling, which is a high, um, which is a high-risk activity. Uh, so, we are going to move forward with the high-risk activities, and, um, I'm feeling good this week about the data even more so. I think seeing sixteen cases today was something that I had not seen in a very long time, and it made me feel, uh, amazingly well. Far as vaccinations are concerned, our clinics are really, um, where they're there, but there is some struggle around getting people to access them. So, we did the J and J clinic last Friday. We had maybe forty individuals come. We were prepared for two hundred. Uh, the J C Williams Clinic will do tomorrow. That clinic, um, appears to, at this point, only have about thirty individuals that have signed up. The Recultural Center on Friday, I'm not seeing a lot of traffic there. V H N, uh, and the school, and the bowling clinic we do at the school is not seeing the same level of traffic. So, the vaccination, uh, rate that I'm seeing is slowing down. Uh, even though the vaccination rate is slowing down, we are seeing, uh, really good traction um, as far as, um, you know, uh, the, the, the cases at least responding, uh, to the vaccinations that we have done.
I have a, a couple more questions, but I want to recognize, uh, Counsel Hurst, who has his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, Commissioner, can you just give us a bit more of an analysis of the racial breakdowns or your, your interpretation of the racial breakdown with respect to vaccinations? How are we doing, uh, in the black and brown communities? Um, what is your take on that based off of the numbers?
Well, the numbers tell us, um, Counselor, uh, Hurst, and that's an excellent question. The number tells, the numbers tell us there is a lot of hesitancy as far as the black and brown communities are concerned in the city of Springfield and across the Commonwealth. And so, we, uh, I think we have to, uh, have, we have to be very targeted, uh, in our outreach. If you heard the numbers that I gave you, uh, we are lagging somewhere around twenty percent, uh, in every category. I'm trying to, as I'm talking, move back to the, um, so if we look at the black and brown communities, um, we are twenty-three point two percent of the population as compared to thirty-four point five in the, as the average in the Commonwealth. Um, if we look at the Hispanic. If we look at the Hispanic numbers, sixteen point seven percent as compared to thirty point one percent. So absolutely, there is a disparity in the, in the black and brown communities, but there's also a disparity in the white community. Although the disparity is not that pervasive or not that big because in that area, what we're seeing is the lagging of about a twelve percent, which is less than the black and brown communities. But the city overall, as far as our vaccination rates are concerned, is really just, is really lagging. And we have attempted to do everything that people have asked us to do, open up neighborhood sites, make it accessible. And, you know, we are going, we're door knocking, we're putting flyers in doors. We're doing, and in, we have seven languages of flyers that we commissioned. And so we're doing everything I think we can to try to do the outreach. But any suggestions, any help would absolutely be something that we would just so welcome because it's going to take all of us together. I think we, we know that.
So, so Commissioner, just on that note, and I'll wrap up with this. You know, I wonder what it is that we're doing from a marketing standpoint. I certainly have heard ninety point seven does an excellent job in terms of playing, playing the message over and over again. I haven't heard much with respect to the actual sites that are being listed that are available for folks to, to take advantage of on ninety point seven. So I don't know if we might be able to update that cart. I also don't know what it is that we're doing in El Pueblo Latino. I feel like I haven't seen much in the, in, in, in the point of view either, although I could be wrong. I think I focus more on the tidbits than on the actual advertisements. But, but I certainly would recommend that type of advertising as well, just to target our specific communities. But I also wonder what other cities are doing with respect to incentivizing folks to actually get vaccinated. And I don't know if we, if we're trying to max out on all these other, you know, mechanisms first. But at some point in time, it seems to me that we got to figure out a way to incentivize folks to get vaccinated. Not sure what that might look like, but certainly something that I think we should process. And I know we're receiving a whole lot of money from the federal government. So to the extent that, you know, we could look into that, that may make some sense. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
But, you know, Counselor Hurst, I appreciate you saying that because you are absolutely right. We have not done targeted, or at least we have not put money into those venues where we know that black and brown individuals in our city are frequent, such as the Point of View and El Pueblo. We, W E B I as well. I mean, these individuals, individuals have reached out to the state to try to get marketing dollars and that has not came to fruition. Again, the state decided to hire a marketer called A S G. They paid them two point five million dollars in order to do their work. And it, it, it's disheartening that they have not reached out to the local advertisers who we know the community at least listens to. So I, I do agree with you. The marketing could be better, the, to incentivize individuals is something that we could do a better job at as well. So I'm very appreciative of your recommendation because that is what I said to the state today. And I was on the phone with A S G today and that was one of my, and I'm always saying, you can speak about cities and towns, but you can't speak for them. And I know who, you know, lives in this city. Now, what the state told me is that A S G has hired outreach teams. One of the leaders of the outreach team is Bishop Swan. The other is Zaida Luna. The other is the Black COVID nineteen Coalition because my, my, my question to them is how, who have you outreach to in the city in order to be able to make sure the messaging and the door knocking? We do our own, but my concern is that it's, if the state comes into cities and tells us, here are the people we hired. We hired Bishop Swan, we hired Zaida Luna, we hired the Black COVID nineteen Coalition, and those are the individuals who are on the ground doing the work for us. None of those individuals, and I can be, well, let me not say none of them because I have been on the COVID nineteen calls. None of those individuals that have reached out and said, you know, can we not be redundant in our efforts? Because we know New North Citizens Council and individuals in the South end are doing a lot of door knocking work as well as Mason Square. So it's really very, it's disheartening to know where you think things should happen and then not have that happen. So what we're going to do is we'll just take it on ourselves. And as you said, well, we should have the money as a city to be able to do appropriate marketing for, for the community.
I'd love a breakdown of those numbers, by the way, in terms of who's receiving what.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. If we could get a breakdown, Helen, of those numbers in terms of the state level, if you have them, in terms of the organizations that are, that are, that they've been, that have been given money to do that outreach, it'd be greatly appreciated. I don't know if you have those at the finance team. Sorry, Mr. Chair.
I don't, this is coming from D P H, so our finance team does not have them. You know, if you looked at, if, if you pay attention to what the state is doing, I think, I can't remember the number, but it was like seven point seven million dollars that went to organizations across the cit, across the state in order to do targeted outreach. In our neighborhood, Tapestry Health got money as well as New North Citizens Council. But if you looked at that list, you recognize that those were the only Western, or at least I recognize them as the only agencies that I knew in the city. As far as the state's marketing, those teams that they are funding to go out, I did not ask them how much they're paying them. I was, as I said, I was on the phone with A S G today, but I will. I'll ask them, how much are you paying the leads? I'm assuming that the leads who are the COVID nineteen Coalition, as well as Bishop Swan, as well as Zaida Luna, I believe that they are getting funding, but I did not ask how much, but I will do that.
It may be valuable. Has the administration reached out, reached out to, to those individuals that have been contracted by the state?
Have, what?
To those three, and those three grew, I know you're regularly on the COVID, the Black COVID nineteen Coalition, but Bishop Swan and Zaida Luna, have, have they been in communication with the administration?
They have not been in communication with us at all. And for me, and I, you know, I, I really try very hard not to be mean spirited or political. But I do think that when you are working in a community and you have a role that feeds into a pandemic, that it would appear to me that reaching out to the Board of Health would be something that you may want to consider as we have been very public around our outreach efforts and our vaccination efforts. I don't even know if these individuals have the schedule for our vaccination clinics because it would appear to me that when they did the door knocking, they would say, here is the clinic schedule, here they are, you can access them. So I think that there could have been a closer alliance with them, but I have not reached out to them, nor have they reached out to me.
We can, we can perhaps explore that a little more. I know there's a couple of questions from folks. I'm going to, Counselor Allen, I see and hear you. President Williams has joined us, his hand has been up. So I want to go to President Williams and then to Counselor Allen, if that's all right. President Williams?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and Commissioner, thank you again. I mean, I know it's, it's stated and stated often, but it's, it's been a long year.
Yes, it has, yes.
Incoming and, and honestly, just being the leader as relates to public health, protecting health in the city of Springfield. I mean, it, it's been a large measure and I think you've, you've measured up to that. And I, and I just want to ask, I know that, you know, when I'm, when I'm hearing recent reports on television about things coming down the pipeline in regards to COVID, I, I get the impression that there might be a trend toward, you know, the larger manufacturers such as Derna, Pfizer, trying to get the, of course, approval to vaccinate folks who are younger. And when that comes, if that's, if that is coming to reach you, I'm just wondering, do you have any idea if the admin, like the administering of those vaccinations would differ than how they do now as it relates to, you know, a pediatrician versus folks that work for the city or the state administering those vaccines? The number of sites that might be needed to meet our population within the city of Springfield? Do you have any just foresight on that?
Well, it's my understanding, as you know, they are in the third phase of the clinical trial. I don't believe they've gone to E U A, Emergency Youth Authorization at this point. So once that vaccine, and it is Pfizer, who is moving forward with that, I believe it's twelve to eighteen year old potential vaccination, we will do it pretty much the same way we're doing right now. So not need a pediatrician's order, does not have to be, to my knowledge, done in a pediatrician's office. It will not need a pediatrician's sign off. And I think that has to do with the Emergency Youth Authorization. And once that happens through the C D C and F D A, then I think what we're definitely saying is this will be, it will be okay to administer. Much like we did immunizations, we do immunizations now or we did immunizations in the past as a health department. The vaccine was authorized, we gave it to the children and then, you know, they were vaccinated. So I expect the process to be extremely similar.
Great, great. Well, I appreciate that, the context. And I'm fresh off of my second dose today, so I'm not joining you all by, by video because I am rested a bit. But again, thank you for all the work you do and everyone else on the call. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I apologize, Counselor Allen, I was muted.
Yeah, hi Helen and, and everybody on the call. I'm disturbed by the, the double digit discrepancy of percent, twenty percent between us, no matter what grouping it was. It was, it was still low, it's still a bigger discrepancy than, than I was thinking it would be. So I'm wondering if, you know, could we invite, you know, Bishop Swan and Zaida and the Black COVID nineteen Coalition to attend this meeting next week? And make sure we're in sync with the outreach? Because in order to cut that discrepancy down, we got to get to more people and I'm wondering if we're doing, if we're going to the same streets? Or I don't know enough about the outreach strategy, but maybe we should have a meeting on that, just the theme for next week's meeting? And see what we can do. And I, I also was wondering if other cities that have similar populations as us, like Worcester or Brockton or Lawrence or wherever, if there's any ideas that they've had? Or if our numbers are similar to what their numbers are? And at any rate, just whatever we can do to, to narrow that gap between us and other parts of the state, not because it's a race, but because it's, we got to get everybody healthy and have a chance to, to get the vaccine. So that's what I would suggest, that there be some outreach to them and maybe invite them to this meeting next week.
Well, I certainly, that would be up to Counselor. What are you doing? Counselor Allen, are you walking?
Yeah, I'm walking.
Okay, well, thank you.
Walking around my block.
I see you bobbing up and down, okay.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to be healthy and I thought this was a, a meeting I could participate in by walking.
Good, excellent. So Counselor Letterman, that would be to you to invite Zaida Luna or I'm not sure who the representative is from the Coalition, but I think he told me it was State Rep. Williams. So I'm not sure if you want to invite those individuals to talk about their outreach strategy.
Well, we certainly could, Commissioner, and perhaps if you could join us or whichever member of X force would be appropriate relative to collaboration on that. And I, I know the Commissioner is participating from the clinic, so I do not, I want to be respectful of her time, but I'll certainly work with her to get that meeting scheduled at that request. Commissioner, I just had a couple of quick things for you myself, which was relative to the eighteen to thirty four population. I'd like to have a, a conversation about that. One of the things that sort of comes to mind is, is what digital marketing is taking place. Part of that, I know that that kind of plays into what you had said from the state, but perhaps as we're looking at, at our platform, I know we just accepted a grant last night as well towards outreach. So I'd, I'd be curious to see what digital marketing is occurring. And then the other thing I've noticed, Bay State has been doing some walk-in clinics where, you know, you don't have to necessarily sign up in advance and, and provide your insurance card if you do have one. I'm wondering if it might make sense to do some of that in the future with the local clinics? I know there is one doing that now, which seems to have been successful in the Bay area. I'm wondering if that might be an option at some point for us to do some walk-in clinics and target those towards younger individuals to sort of make it a little bit easier for them to be able to just know that if they show up at that date and time, that there would be availability. I think the concern would be if we were overwhelmed, but it seems like right now that doesn't seem to be the case. So I'm wondering if that might be possible in the future?
Absolutely, and thank you for the recommendation. It certainly is something that we have thought of. Obviously, it is more efficient to do it, to have people sign up, do their health at a station online. So when they get here, we can kind of ask those questions again, but not need to drill down as much. But you're absolutely right, we need to do whatever works. I mean, our strategy has to be to go where the people are. And if online's not working right now, it was working well for a while, but if it's not working now, then yeah, we need to change our approach. Maybe we need to change our locations. Maybe we need to go into community centers where these young folks are during the day. I'm not sure, but you're absolutely right. The strategy has to shift at this point. And the digital marketing is also something we need to consider along with the walk-in clinics. So yes, I, I agree with you that we need to try to think about how to do this in a way that is inviting to that age group we're trying to reach.
So perhaps, perhaps we could focus on all of that in one meeting, which we will work to schedule. So my final question, Commissioner, I know the, the governor's made several announcements about reopening and I saw an announcement from your office and the mayor just earlier today relative to reopening and basketball hoops. I was wondering if you could speak to, will we be following the same reopening? Or is it your intention to follow the same reopening schedule as the governor has announced? And also, if you wanted to dive in briefly to your announcement on the basketball courts?
So the, you know, let me say this. The basketball courts has always been something that I have had on the radar and the city. When hockey opened and other sports opened, it was clear to me that basketball is something that our young people enjoy in our communities. And so we really wanted to open the basketball courts. However, based on the data, and if you look at the data, it was going up and just recently came down. The governor last week did announce, and obviously I, and I don't think anybody in the state knew that he was going to say on May tenth, high-risk sports tournaments, not, you know, he did not say ground or playgrounds, but he did say high-risk tournaments would be able to be opened. And so we, based on the data that we've looked at for the last two weeks going down, this week looking better. The May seventeenth, we will spend the week, if the data stays the same. And I just want to be clear about that, that while we absolutely agree that those hoops need to go up, we just want to keep that data in a place where it needs to be so that I can, or we can be assured that our young people are safe. Our young people do go home to parents, do go home to grandparents. So it's important to us that not only that exercise happened on the basketball courts, but that we are able to make sure that they're safe. So on the seventeenth, it is, I hope that on the seventeenth, we'll spend the week putting those hoops up across the city. You know that when those hoops went up in Adams Playground, and I'm not sure, Patrick Sullivan would have to tell you, the playground, but the backboards were damaged. And so not only do we have to put the hoops back up, we have to replace. And so not only do we have to put the hoops back up, we have to replace damaged backboards as well. So we will spend the week of the 17th doing that. It has been reported to me that there are individuals in the community who have said that they will monitor those basketball courts. And I do hope that they keep their word and that do spend some time going to those courts to make sure our, our young people are at least staying safe. So that's the rationale. We were always, if anyone had talked to me prior to deciding that this should become a media event, they would have known what the plan was. I would have been happy to have that discussion. But I read about it in the newspaper in terms of people demanding that the hoops go back up with not valuing and expecting the Board of Health enough to come to me and say, you know, this is what we're concerned about. You know, I have never not tried to work with the Springfield community on anything that I thought would benefit our youth or our adults. So I'm disappointed, number one, that this had to play out in the way that it did. But that's, that's, it is what it is, I guess. But we had never not planned to put those hoops up. As soon as the Governor's guidance allowed us to move forward, and that just happened last week, we were always going to move forward and put those hoops back up. And so we will do that. But I will be honest with you, I still have some concerns. So I'm really hopeful that there will be, the community will be a part of making sure our children are safe.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, for the update. And as always, also for your guidance and your expertise. You see just two hands, so I'm, I'm gonna make these the last two questions. But I did, do want to give them their time, President Williams, and then followed by Councilor Hurst will have the last word.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I just had a quick question for you. And I, I know basketball hoops have definitely been the topic of conversation. And I agree with everything that you just said, but I also wanted to ask, and I also called the, you know, the Mayor's office on this too in regards to libraries because I've received some calls on libraries. And I was just wondering, is there any discussion with, you know, Molly, Ms. Molly Fargerty or any of the library staff in regards to how we could safely reopen those when the time came to do so?
Yes, I'm meeting with libraries and elder affairs on Thursday at 2:00. And that is the topic of discussion is, is there a way for us to simply, to safely open our libraries to the community and looking at elder affairs as well? Each one has its own set of COVID-19 challenges. But again, if our numbers stay low where they are, then I think we can begin the process of putting structures in place to safely reopen at least the libraries. I'm a little, I think, I have, and again, our meeting is not until Thursday at 2:00, but I certainly am concerned about our elders. So that might be a different discussion, but we are meeting Thursday at 2:00. Thank you for asking the question.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Councilor Hurst, last question for the Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner, a question and a comment. One is, did you say hockey has already been permitted to resume?
Hockey, no, again, hockey, organized hockey. So what that means is that there are, are coaches, there are social distancing, there are face covering, there are things in place to keep those, those, those individuals. Hockey on a limited basis has opened its arena.
Got it, thank you. And then I guess my other comment, and I think one of the frustrations that, that I had, and certainly that other members of the community I'm sure had, was really not necessarily knowing what the plan is. And even as we go to reopen basketball hoops, I think I heard a lot of talk about the fact that we wanted to be in the yellow. And I guess my fear is that it might make sense for us to lay out what the plan will be in the event we get back into the red. And also, what are some of the precautions that we're expecting the public to take? If we're going to open up these hoops? And then the question is, does it make, so does it make sense to open them all up, right? Because if we're talking about having community members monitor the hoops, it, it probably is unrealistic if we open all of the hoops up to have community members or organizations say, hey, I'll monitor this particular basketball hoop. And you got, you know, 50 a month throughout the city of Springfield. So it just seems to me that we ought to have a plan. I also remember us being in the yellow for two to three weeks, you know, a couple of months back, and there were no hoops. So I just, I just would, it would be helpful if the plan to the best of our ability, and I know things change based off of the numbers, are really spelt out. And, you know, I know there were some other cities who had hoops up. There had to be a loophole in the Governor's plan to allow these other cities to have their hoops up as well. So I think the back, the, the bigger point is that it'd be good to have a plan, especially if we might go back, so that folks know in advance, hey, if the numbers get here, we're gonna have to pull back a little bit. And I think the backlash won't be as significant if, if folks know in advance. Thank you.
You know, for Hurst, as always, you bring up excellent points. And you know, I value and always will respect your opinion. And so I am in the process of putting together a reopening document for basketball hoops. I will make sure that that is shared with the public over the next week. As far as opening just a few, the challenge is, some could see it as a discriminatory practice. We have individuals around the city who want to play basketball. So that, that again, would, might be something that we can consider, but also maybe something that the public may, may be not happy about based on, on, on that decision. But I will definitely put together, I think my, my point is, Councilor Hurst, if, if anytime there's anything that impacts my department, which COVID-19 does, just to have the conversation, that's it. A conversation really, something that I enjoy, and there's nothing that I will refuse the Springfield community if I can do it. So that's where we are with basketball. Which, which part are you taking, Councilor Hurst? I know, I know you've got your eye on one of them. Anyway.
You will do my part, Commissioner.
I know you will, I know you will. But I will get that guidance out as soon as I finish it. So everyone has it, but thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Hurst and Commissioner. It is 5:28, and Focus Springfield has let me know that they have a 5:30 meeting that they need to move to. So at this time, I, I do want to thank everybody for attending at the suggestion at the meeting. We'll work to bring some folks together next week specifically around outreach and look forward to seeing folks at that time. I do want to thank Melanie, I know Melanie hopped on to answer any finance questions, but given that we are at 5:30 and Focus will need to end the meeting at 5:30, we will make sure that following this next meeting, I think we can hold another meeting specifically on AMR and finance because I know that we will be seeing, hopefully, some more guidance coming out at that time. And we will look forward to talking with the finance team then.